Good evening. It is now 6:30 and I will call to order the Wednesday, August 10th, 2016 Burnsville Planning Commission. Commissioners, thank you for attending this evening on this odd evening of a Wednesday. Our calendars are all off. Thanks, staff, for attending this evening. I appreciate everyone's time. Our first item this evening is the adoption of this evening's agenda. And staff, do you have any changes to tonight's agenda, posted agenda?
Yes, we do, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, item three is a public hearing that was scheduled for Industrial Equities Group LLC for a conditional use permit for a sports performance facility. They identified this week that they were withdrawing their application, so this item will not be heard tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, any other changes to this evening's agenda? Hearing none with the changes mentioned by staff. Do I hear motion for approval?
Moved.
Moved by Commissioner Benke.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walter. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. Second item this evening is approval of the minutes from our July 25th, 2016. Commissioners, do you have any changes or updates to the draft minutes in our background? Commissioner Singh?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner, I think item three, election of planning commission chair and vice chair. I think there were two separate motions. The first one for the chair moved by, was moved by Workman and seconded by Levy. And then I moved for the vice chair. Commissioner Benke, mine was, I'm not sure which one of the attending, what I know, I moved the vice chair nomination.
That's correct. Yes.
Should be reflected as two different motions.
Two different motions.
Staff, any other clarifications?
No.
Thanks.
We will make that change.
Commissioners, any other changes to the drafted minutes?
Chair, with the...
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Singh.
With the noted change, I beg to move the adoption of the, move the approval of the minutes of the last meeting.
Moved by Commissioner Singh. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Workman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. That rockets us to the fourth item on our agenda, and it is a public hearing. It's an application of the city of Burnsville for zoning ordinance amendments to Title 10, Chapters 7, 12, 22B, and 30 to modify provisions for tree maintenance, parking use, storage, accessory buildings, HOC Design Review Committee, and wall signs.
Mr. Chair, the monitor shows item three on the, here, not item four.
And they'll have to, they will have to update that. Ms. Garrels.
Thank you, Commissioners. The application before you is an application that is being brought forward by staff. The amendments are what is known as housekeeping amendments. You may have remembered some of those. Staff periodically brings these types of amendments forward. When there are a number of minor changes, we try to kind of put things together for you. There are always updates to the various city code chapters. For the planning commission, any changes to the zoning ordinance, which is Title 10 of the city code, actually require public hearings. So anytime there's changes to that zoning chapter, we come before you with public hearings, and that's what we have this evening. Many of the proposed changes, however, that we'll be going over are related to other updates elsewhere in the city code, primarily related to property maintenance. And the background of that is in approximately 2012, the city created a new subdepartment under community development for protective inspections and created a, we have a staff, a full-time staff now, that deals with code enforcement throughout the city. They, before this department was created, basically if there were complaints that were filed or people had complaints, then those were investigated and we had one person primarily responsible for the entire city. Since that time, with the addition of this new department, the city goes out and does proactive inspections. And every site within the city then is reviewed or inspected at least once every three years. So now they're on their fourth year, starting, you know, with their second round of site inspections and working on that. With that process, one of the major things that is happening, kind of consistent but on a separate track than this, is the city council will be considering at their next meeting, adoption of the International Property Maintenance Code. And the reason, part of the reason for that is to adopt a code that is a consistent code out there. Other cities have this code. And in terms of our ability to do code enforcement, this is something that the city attorney and our property maintenance staff feel is important to be able to show the public and anyone who would be against, you know, a code enforcement action or have an issue or possibly looking for legal counsel, would basically now be looking at, this is an international code, something that's consistent internationally. So that is kind of a little bit of background with regard to that. There are also other changes in the city code that will be made and considered by the city council next week, and those relate to the building code title for building regulations, for health and nuisance regulations, and several other items, again, tied to this IPMC adoption and making everything consistent between the separate sections of the city code and also with the adoption of this new IPMC. So a lot of things happening. The part of it that relates to planning commission is, are the zoning changes, which are what we're looking at this evening. I wanted to draw the attention of the commissioners to the, we did hand out a revised ordinance, which is provided to you. The only change between this and what went out with the packet is on page one, and it's under Section 10718, which is the screening and buffer areas. The proposed change there is to provide an alternative or alternatives to the standard screening requirements in terms of height. This issue has come up through other issues out there related to property maintenance and inspections. And the current ordinance says that anything that needs to be screened needs to have at least a six-foot tall, either fence, landscape screening, et cetera. There are no real exceptions to that. However, when we deal with single-family neighborhoods and even duplexes, places where people have their own individual garbage collection or, and/or refuse and recycling, a lot of times people are able to, they're not able to keep those containers in the garage. They are allowed to keep them outside, but they need to be screened. And the recommendation actually has come down through the city attorney to make a couple of modifications and to allow for those situations when you're dealing with single-family twin-home type units, anything, basically dwelling units having their individual trash and recycling, that they need to provide screening to screen what the, what the containers are, et cetera, but it doesn't have to be six feet tall. It can be more into scale. And it just needs to provide screening of the items that are not to be viewed. So that addition has been added, and that's under A, number one. And then in addition to that, the city attorney is recommending some minor changes in that, what we're looking at for screening standards is adding that it's when viewed from adjacent properties or lots, again, to make a distinguish, to distinguish that basically all property is involved. There's been some discussion about, well, we're not part of a lot, so we're in a bigger development. There's multiple units on one piece of property, et cetera. So to clarify that, for when we face legal challenges and whatnot, the attorney is recommending that we add to properties lots, and then also, instead of just right-of-way adding or private roads. So minor changes, but we wanted to draw your attention. We did publish for the review of this entire section, so the publishing requirements have been met, but this is something that came up at the last minute that the attorneys had suggested that we incorporate. The next item is under 10720. Those are general maintenance standards. This is also on page one of the draft ordinance. And basically, what we are proposing there is to remove language that stipulates that these dead trees need to be removed within 30 days. The reason for that is elsewhere, under the property maintenance titles in the ordinance and under this new IPMC, the requirements for removal will be consistent for all types of nuisance applications. So this is removing something that would be inconsistent with the IPMC. On page three, this one looks like we're removing a lot of things. And in essence, we are recommending removal of a section of the zoning ordinance that relates to the use of parking areas, primarily in single-family duplex and medium and high-density districts. This language is proposed to be deleted out of the zoning title, but it's going to be added into the property maintenance title. So the same language will still exist. It's just in a different part of the city code. Reason for the change is really related to timing and what it takes to, to enforce, do code enforcement. If something is in the zoning ordinance, the appeals process you need to follow is specific to the zoning ordinance, and that is a 60-to-90-day process that requires review by the city council before any action can be taken. This, moving this, will move it to the other part of the city code so that the enforcement action doesn't require city council approval. There is a new enforcement procedure that's been put into place within the past couple of months that involves an administrative judge that basically will consider the, consider what the two sides are arguing about in terms of the nuisance, and then they will make the decision. So there's a specific timeframe that goes along with that. Again, it's provided, it's consistent with state statute, and it'll be consistent with all the other property maintenance and nuisance items and enforcement procedures from the city code. The next item, under 1074, is also on page two. This is an addition to the zoning ordinance, and this relates to accessory buildings and structures. We have had some issues where people have treated the exterior of their garages, whether attached or detached, with different color materials and different types of materials. In order to address that, we've got provisions in the ordinance that call for consistency or compatibility. And up until very recently, those standards had always been enforced. We have some questions, and the city attorney had recommended that we add this language to specifically state that attached and detached garages need to be the same color as the principal use or principal dwelling. A lot of these are minor. They come out of a lot of case law and attorney language, so that's, that's pretty much why they are, they are proposed. It's either to deal with something that's already happened or that we anticipate might happen, the attorneys anticipate might happen, and are just trying to preclude other issues from coming up in the future. The next change is on page three, and this is a very simple change. Item 10121 specifies and has reference to that dwellings need to meet applicable requirements of the, and it's got an old citation, the 2000 International Building Code. The city does not use the International Building Code. We have adopted, and again, this is adopted elsewhere in the, in the city code, and the proposal is to change that to current Minnesota State Building Code to be consistent with our actual practices. The next item is under the Heart of the City zoning district. And a number, well, probably within the last year, we made a number of changes that included changes to the Heart of the City zoning district. And what this refers to is there was a Heart of the City Design Review Committee at one point in time, and that was a committee that was brought together anytime there was an application for the Heart of the City. And they basically reviewed the application, the architectural elements, and reviewed the development against the design standards that are set up for the Heart of the City. Since most of the development in Heart of the City has been completed, the city council disbanded that HOC- DRC committee. So what we're doing is removing that language, again, because they don't exist anymore. So that is proposed, also just a cleanup. Oops. And let's see here. Under, at the bottom, under section or Title 1037, these are the city's sign regulations or sign ordinance. We have, under item A, this is a clarification that staff is proposing, the way that the language read or currently reads, there's some confusion on the application of it. And this is stating that basically you can only have two signs on a building per, per business. A year or so ago, a number of updates to the zoning, or excuse me, the sign regulations were done, and we created a new comprehensive sign plan. Some of you may have recalled some discussion of this on some applications recently. And what we wanted to do is to clarify, the whole intent was that if you provided a comprehensive sign plan, that those, you could have additional signage. So it's basically tied to, either you have two with no comprehensive sign plan. If you want more than that, regardless if you're a single occupancy or multiple tenant retail-type building or industrial building, you can have more. You just need to provide a comprehensive sign plan. And those plans do need to conform to the other requirements of the sign ordinance. And with that, those are the recommendations. This is the ordinance that is being recommended for your consideration this evening, and I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Garrels. I do have one initial question. Can you educate me on timing? If, you know, if this goes forward from us and it goes to city council, we remove some stuff before the International Building, or International Property Maintenance is adopted, what happens? Are there going to be some stuff that falls through the cracks? Or just help us with kind of timing?
The IPMC adoption is scheduled for council next week.
Okay.
The other code amendments that kind of go with this are also on that same agenda along with this. So all three items will be considered at the same point.
Okay.
And the council has had previous discussions on the IPMC and given direction to staff to proceed with this process.
Okay. Commissioners, why don't we try to have a, I think I'd like to just kind of tick down through these and we deal with them one at a time, and then if we have questions. So the, let's go back to the very first one or item, I guess, number one, screening and buffer areas. Commissioners, what questions do you have of staff for that, that particular item? Nothing? Commissioner Benke?
Yeah, I got it back up before that. Just to be clear, Deb, you said that even though we have an element here that was not in the previous notifications, the notification of this to the city has been met?
Yes. We didn't, we don't get so specific in our overall ordinance publications when we do our hearing notices. So this is part of Chapter 7, and Chapter 7 is identified in the public hearings as those provisions under consideration.
Because as, you did drop this off with us, and it doesn't have some of the things that I was reading over the weekend.
Correct. Exactly. Yep. So this, this is an addition.
Okay. The next question here, again, you, we're referring to the International Property Maintenance Code. I'm very familiar with the international codes by virtue of my business. I pulled up the International Property Maintenance Code, and most of the things that are being referred to here in terms of trees and parking are not in the Property Maintenance Code.
Correct. They will be, but they are being relocated elsewhere under the appropriate sections of the city code related to property, property maintenance.
Okay. So do we know which of these items are supposed to be covered under the International Property Maintenance Code?
No, not specifically. That is something that's being handled by our property maintenance folks and the city attorney's office.
Okay. And do we know which version of the Property Maintenance Code is being adopted, whether it's the 2012 or the 2015? I mean...
I'm sure that that's identified in the council packet because it's theirs. I do not know the answer to that specific question.
Because reading through it, I find a number of things right off the bat that appear to be inconsistent between the current building code, and I'm trying to understand how they apply because where the hierarchy would be and how they're going to use each one.
Yes.
So perhaps...
Yeah. It's very, it's a very complicated process. Our staff has been working with the attorney's office for several months on this, so this may not be the end of these tweaks as we go through, but the agenda packet for the city council meeting will be out and available on Friday, and that will have everything in it. So hopefully that, if you take a look at that, if you still have questions, please give us a call, and we'll get the answers for you.
Okay. And the only reason I bring it up is because I know that the state of Minnesota has had an issue with some of the things that are in the international building codes and has amended them out. They've adjusted a number of items because things don't always work. What, international codes are designed for the entire nation, and some of the times the stuff that they put in there doesn't apply to Minnesota very well.
Specific regions, correct.
Absolutely.
We are very fortunate in that our building official does actually work on the language that is prepared for the state building code. He works on those committees and things. So he has been assisting in this as well.
I've been invited, but I don't have time.
Multi-people involved.
I've been invited, but I don't have time.
If you think this is fun, I'm sure that's much more enjoyable.
Oh, perfect nighttime reading material, Mr. Chair. I'll give it back to you and questions.
Okay. Any other, any other concerns around 10718, screening and buffer areas?
I have one.
Okay.
Well, actually, I have two. The addition of lots to adjacent properties?
Yes.
I do, I think I see why it happens. I'm just having a hard time understanding why adjacent properties by itself wouldn't include all lots. And I'm struggling with the multifamily stuff because the multifamily has to be on a lot. And I realize he's trying to cover things. I'm just wondering where the flaw came in the interpretation of that.
I believe that this is related more to our mobile home parks and some challenges that we've had.
Okay.
So I believe that these changes are addressed because of that.
That explained it to me in a moment. The next thing is, under the screening reduction, it specifically discusses townhomes for individual trash recycling, assuming that they're outside and that they need screening. However, I have personal knowledge that part of the requirements when you submit a townhome project in the city of Burnsville is you have to demonstrate placement of the cans inside the garage.
Yes.
So basically, that is in here because...
This is language that applies throughout the city.
Over projects.
The current, exactly. This is to just make sure that those are covered as well.
Okay. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Benke, thank you very much. Any other questions on that item? Let's go to number two, which is 10720, maintenance, where we're just talking about removal of dead trees. Any questions there, Commissioners?
Curious. Deb, is there a different, when it moves to the other location, this must be the International Property Maintenance Code again?
I'm not sure if this is part of the IPMC or part of the general nuisance standards that are elsewhere in the city code.
Yeah, I didn't, again, I didn't see anything about trees in the current, in the version that I'm looking at, which is the 2012. So unless they've updated it and we're, and we're adopting the newer one, okay.
Nope. This may well be in, just with the other nuisances, the whole point from our property maintenance folks is to move whatever they can out of the zoning ordinance. There are some things that have to be in the zoning ordinance based on how the statutes are put together. Things that aren't, they would like to have elsewhere so that they can apply the same procedures for code compliance dates, how they notify people, those types of things.
Further questions, Commissioners? The next item is the accessory buildings and structures, 107-4.
Mr. Chair, I have a question on that.
Commissioner Workman.
In my world, we deal with a lot of hailstorms and matching issues. So if you've got an older home with older vinyl siding, they might not make that siding anymore. And so we have to deal with matching issues where the new siding might not necessarily match the current. That's a constant struggle.
Right.
How, how tight of a guideline is this? I mean, it seems pretty watertight with just one guideline in that scenario. Is there any leniency for that? Also, you know...
What we do with these, this really is intended to address twin homes and townhomes that aren't part of associations. And it's not saying that you cannot have a different material because that's true of a lot of the materials, the old Masonite and whatnot. If you can get it, you probably don't even want it, you know, as that. So they're indicating color. And the way we would look at that is, I mean, we're not going to go up and say, oh, this is the exact, you know, there's fading and whatnot, but generally within the same, you know, color scheme.
So would, like, a brick facade on the front of the building, you know, as like maybe an architectural design, be considered a mismatch in this scenario?
I don't believe so, no. I mean, we'd take a look at the entire, the entire principal structure and the entire garage or detached garage. You want the materials. Currently, it's required that they be compatible. This color standard, again, is in here because of challenges that we've had and something that is suggested by the city attorney.
So really just more about gratuitous, hot pink garages?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner. Commissioner Benke.
Yeah, I'm struggling at it from the architecture standpoint, seeing that compatibility of materials is not included in here.
That is part of the accessory buildings and structures. That's already in the ordinance.
Oh, this is, this is item M.
This is just one addition. Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
The basic issue, I think, is still the same outside of the fact that you brought up, where it does limit architectural expression more than I'm comfortable with. And I'm, I'm struggling because I understand the issue, but I have a hard time with telling a designer on a new structure that he has to make the garage the same color as the principal if there's an architectural compatibility to it. And I'm wondering if there's a way that this could be phrased that might allow for that architectural expression.
I believe that that architectural expression is part of that compatibility part of it. Where we've had the specific challenges is related to colors.
Right.
Again, twin homes, no association. So that's what's trying to be addressed by this.
Right.
The compatibility, those elements still will remain in the, in the ordinance.
Sure, but let's just say you have a detached garage that is one color beige, and it's a siding that is vertical-oriented, and the other house, the rest of the house, has something else, and they go together architecturally. I mean, I'm, I'm struck by this because it's similar to the current ordinance that does not allow metal roofs on single-family homes. not allow metal roofs on single-family homes, where if somebody wanted to come in and put a copper standing seam roof on as an, as an architectural element, they're not allowed to unless they come in for a conditional use permit. And in any other city around us, it's just, it's, it's, it's an architectural feature and it's asked for. So I'm struggling with this one a little bit because it sort of opens the door to other limits that feel uncomfortable.
The, for the metal roofing material, staff, we have experienced that as well. We brought that back to the council. The council's direction is they don't want this, the metal.
I saw, I saw that meeting.
Yeah.
I was, it was interesting, but anyway.
You know, in your recommendations, if you've got other language or ideas that you would like to see as opposed to this, we should include that as a, as a recommendation to council.
Okay, I'll think about that while we continue.
Commissioners, other questions in reference to 10-7-4? Commissioner Levy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I understand garage structure, does that include garage door? Garage doors have a variety of colors that are not necessarily the same as the main structure. Got one in the neighborhood that's a beautiful orange. Not all the neighbors like it, but it's a very beautiful orange. Mine is a dark chocolate brown. The house is beige. How does the garage door?
You're going to do trouble.
They're coming for you.
How's garage door fit into this?
We look at doors and trim around sidings, et cetera, as trim materials, and these are referring to your base.
Structure.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Levy. Commissioners, other questions in reference to this item? Nothing? Commissioner Banky, would you, let's move on and we'll come back.
Yeah, I need to think about what I might suggest as an option.
Section 10-12-1, special minimum requirements, we're just changing the code. Any questions based around that one? Okay. Number five.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was reading higher up. Deb, is there a reason to refer to the section of the code that specifically adopts the code, just as a, as a direction for somebody reading this?
No, we did ask our building official that specifically how we should have the language, and he suggested leaving it as Minnesota state building code.
Okay, so not as adopted in section whatever?
Correct.
Okay.
Other questions? Section number, or item number five, 10-22B administration, looks like we're just moving that.
Deleting that because the committee does not, no longer exists.
Questions? Okay. And then number six, questions based around signage?
Deb, from a, can you explain to maybe people that are listening what, what the extent of a comprehensive sign plan means? Is there a cost associated with filing that? And I guess the best example I have, I think, when Jared Jewelers was built, we, the sign structuring was a bit restrictive and we could only have two, you could only allow a sign on the front and the back. And then we made some changes and they, I think they came in with a comprehensive plan and they have signs all the way around. Because in some cases, I think we have issues with facilities like Chipotle. We only allowed them to have two and they have a facade that faces Target. And if you look over there, it almost looks like there's nothing in that building.
Yes.
So I just, as we talk about this, what, what would it take to have someone, what is the process to file a comprehensive sign plan so everybody understands?
Certainly. When we went through the sign ordinance here a couple of years ago, we relaxed it quite a bit. We allow a lot more signs now, and we allow larger signs, more of all types of signs as a result of that. However, to have some ability for staff to enforce and monitor and see, does this comply or not, what was added to the ordinance at that time is a comprehensive sign plan. And what that is, is a plan that shows the exterior elevations of the building, where the signs are proposed. And then the applicant gives the dimensions of the signs, the proposed locations of the signs, and they basically set forth the, what they will allow their tenants to do. Staff did not want to be in the position of allocating signage to multiple tenants in a multiple tenant building. That should be the owner of the building to do that. So that's basically what's involved. And then they submit the, the information about what type of sign is it, you know, what are the depth of the letters, you know, those types of things, basically just to be in conformance with the ordinance.
Okay.
Also, we need to be able to calculate the way that signage is allocated. It's based on the total signage on the property, including freestanding signs, wall signs, window signs, those types of things. So we need to know what the size is of all of that signage so that we can determine if it is consistent or if it's over the allocation amount that the ordinance provides for.
I think that came up with, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, with when Best Buy moved, we had some issues with signage with everything that went with that, and it wasn't tied to a comp plan for that entire strip center.
Correct, yes.
And I think there was also some stuff with Becker Furniture.
Yes.
And signage with Petsmart and stuff.
Okay. All right, commissioners, other questions besides my, my initial questions? Commissioner Workman?
From my own knowledge and maybe anybody listening, does this sign plan still maintain that cabinet signs are not allowed in Burnsville or, no?
Yes, that's not being changed.
Okay.
Yes.
Cabinet signs, excuse me.
Cabinet sign, Commissioner Levy, is a, is a, basically a box that fits on the outside of a building that the, then there's just a, the sign is mounted to the front of it instead of having it be individual letters or recessed into the building.
Okay.
It's something Burnsville's had in its code for quite a while. We've had several things come in front of us as a commission in reference to cabinet signs.
Yep.
So any other questions around?
Mr. Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Banky?
Deb, since I told me, I think here, the maximum number of wall signs for any business, single occupancy or multiple occupancies shall be two or fewer. Seems repetitive and a little confusing. Might a different way to say it would be the number of wall signs for any business in a single occupancy or multiple occupancy building shall be between zero and two. And then beyond that, the number and placement may exceed two provided a comprehensive plan is approved.
Yep, we can certainly make that change.
I just think it gets rid of that problem reading that.
Thank you. Commissioner Banky? Let's go back, any questions? Let's go back to section 10-7-4. Commissioner Banky, you have the floor.
I guess the only thing I could ask to be looked at here would be the ability for someone who is trying to create an architectural statement that meets standards be perhaps suggested to the DRC meeting.
Okay.
And, and if that doesn't generate a consensus, that it basically have to come to planning commission and council. If somebody wants to do two tones and it works architecturally, I think they should be allowed to.
Yes. That is something for the audience and for some of the newer commissioners, the city, we have a development review committee that is made up of members from the various departments that are responsible for reviewing development projects. And that group meets every two weeks. And the team is responsible for providing feedback on, say, engineering items. We have the police involved, the fire department, planning department, building inspections, natural resources, et cetera. So everyone reviews these plans consistent with their areas of expertise and then provides that feedback to the applicant. We do have other sections of the zoning ordinance where we do have provisions similar to what Commissioner Banky is suggesting, and that is, in the event that there is disagreement, you know, from the staff that's reviewing, that the item can be reviewed by the development review committee. And they will, it's a group consensus as opposed to just, say, one planner taking a look at it and saying, wow, that's, that's a different color, we just don't agree with that. And then with the development review committee, you get all of the perspectives. And if they can't agree, then the applicant has the opportunity to bring the item forward for review by planning commission and council. We can certainly do that.
So, Ms. Garros, can we clarify that the wording as it is would stay? We would add, can you help us with what the changes would be so that we make sure that, because obviously there's a reason this is in front of us.
Correct.
And Commissioner Banky's suggestion is, let's word that appropriately, that it goes in front of the design?
To append this, to add the option for a application that chooses to not follow this, and there'd be some words missing there, I'm sure, be, be able to bring this to the DRC. And I'm sure some of the other languages, or you can refer back to other, other things that refer it to the DRC. But this language would not change for the, for the very reason that you brought up. It's here.
Yes, it gives an, an option, just additional, I guess, input from a complete team of reviewers as opposed to one individual.
So to be more specific with Garros, we, we don't have the entire code in front of us, so you're just going to make sure somewhere in this section, we have the opportunity to use the, the design review committee specifically?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And quite honestly, there's, there's quite a, excuse me.
Go ahead.
I'm sure that under accessory buildings, there's a number, I mean, this is item M.
Yes.
So I know that there's a lot of other restrictions on accessory and detached buildings. And I think that probably applies to all of them. If somebody really has something that they hired an architect to design and it doesn't meet a letter of this?
Yes.
That the opportunity for them to present their case should be made.
Yes. And I will need to look, I just don't know offhand out of the thousands of pages of zoning ordinance, how that is stipulated. If it is a general statement, we may just, you know, add some language here that the option for DRC review is available per section, whatever, for, for architectural differences or consideration. Or we can add the specific DRC review language right to item M.
I, I think I'd rather have you just review it and stick it where it seems to be appropriate.
Absolutely.
Without everything in front of us, I don't know if this is the appropriate spot for it.
Right, I don't either.
Are you, are you okay with that, Ms. Garros?
Yes.
Okay.
I have that changed.
Commissioners, any other questions?
For my own clarification on item M, Commissioner Banky speaking, are we strictly referring to development or if somebody decides they're going to re-sign their house?
This would come into play, yeah, if you want to re-sign your house, then you do need to come in for a permit to be able to do that. So this is being applied at the permit stage.
Okay. And so if an applicant wanted to do what we're discussing, you know, not gratuitous, and there was some disagreement, then we're saying that we have the opportunity to bring it between, bring it to the DRC for further review?
And then the individual, they always have the opportunity to make application for a conditional use permit, really for, I think, most if not all of these architectural type standards, that they can bring it forth. And then the planning commission and council can, if you agree, you know, can say approval or move it on. It's kind of like we do the same thing for special purpose fences. There's a general standard that fences in residential areas cannot be taller than six feet for privacy fence, but in instances where somebody wants taller fencing for a particular reason, they can make application for a conditional use permit. And I think a couple of those have been approved.
We've had, we've had those in front of us.
Right.
Within the last year or so.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Commissioner Banky?
You brought up the duplex issue. Have we done anything on that to resolve conflict between two adjacent units?
I believe that a settlement agreement is being prepared or something to...
For that one that we were talking about? What about going forward in terms of offering advice to our residents going forward?
We have what's in the ordinance and then what's proposed here. Unfortunately, the judiciary is becoming much more involved in issues than they ever have in the past. So we can always be challenged. We just have to, have to deal with it and try to be prepared to the extent that we can.
Okay. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Banky, any other questions? Commissioners, any other questions in general? With that being said, I would stand, oh, a public hearing. Boy, you know, I almost forgot that.
Yeah.
Don't you hate it when that happens? This, it's, it's, you know, all the people in the audience. This is a public hearing. At this point, I would like to open the public hearing and ask anyone in the audience that would like to step up to the podium and give us our thoughts in reference to this item. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, your pleasure.
Mr. Chair. Actually, could you supply me with your page? Nope, that one. Do you have one, Deb? Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would move that the planning commission recommend the city council approval of the proposed already ordinance as drafted. I should have memorized that.
Second? Moved by Commissioner Banky, second.
And as amended.
As amended.
Yes, as amended.
Moved by Commissioner Banky and, Commissioner Singh, you're second by Commissioner Singh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. And the motion carries.
Thank you.
That brings us to the last item on our agenda this evening, which would be updates. Commissioners, any updates for the commission this evening? None? Staff, any updates?
Just two items for the commissioners. We do have, actually, our next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting would be August 22nd. That will be canceled because of the applications that we have in process are not ready to proceed for that meeting. So the next regular planning commission meeting will be September 12th. And we'll send out information to you closer to that date. And that should be a Monday.
Should be a Monday.
There you go.
And then I did forget to mention the, the changes to the city code will go in front of the city council on, on the 8/15.
Yes.
With that said, I would stand for a motion for adjournment.
I move the adjournment, Chair.
Moved by Commissioner Singh, second by Commissioner Banky. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. And the motion carries. Everyone have a safe drive home this evening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.